All right, I think we're all set.
Yep, I see our board majority is here.
Yes.
Yep.
So, I'm just gonna call the meeting to order. Sarah Franklin and Janice Duckett in attendance. Linda Mayer, Linda Pena would very much like to be here, but she had a family emergency. We know the only thing that could keep her from us and serving us as an emergency. But since we have some minor items that we've all already discussed and agreed on, we've decided to hold a meeting tonight. So should we do an actual roll call, David, or just move on to the pledge?
We usually do. Just go ahead and call out Commissioner Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Janice Duckett.
Here.
And as you stated, President Linda Pena's absence, communicated absence. And Dave Williamstown Clerk, all present. And the first order should be to just get an agreement or consent to the agenda.
Before the pledge?
No, yes. Yes. Pledge first.
All right. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the slide.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
The Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty.
Justice.
Justice for all.
Do the commissioners that are present consent to the agenda? Janice. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is a closed session statement that I need to read. So I'm just gonna read it. At the September 22 boardwork session, the meeting was closed to the public in accordance with the procedures found in the general provisions article 3-305B of the Maryland Code. The topics and purposes of this closed meeting were to consult with our town attorney on options for possible next steps in light of the recent outcome of the Owens petition for judicial review and to review personnel matters. The specific statutory authority to close the session is found in the General Provisions Act, Section 3-305, Subsection B, Paragrasse 7 and 1. Persons present for discussion: President Linda Pena, Commissioner Sarah Franklin, Commissioner Janice Duckett, and Town Council Kevin J. Best Esquire. I think that might be in there because he wasn't actually there, so. I'm gonna omit that last part. Dave tells me nothing needs to be done, but just to read that, right, Dave?
Correct.
Okay. So we can move on to approval of meeting minutes and financial reports. We have minutes from September 15 regular town meeting, September 16 board gathering session, which was sort of like a new commissioner information session, September 22 boardwork session, and then there's the finance report and approval of the treasurer's report as of September 30, 2020. Janice, can you move to approve those if you agree to?
Yes, I do.
Do you want me to make the motion? I move we approve all of the meeting minutes and financial reports listed in the agenda. Can you second it, Janice?
I second, yes.
All in favor? I?
I.
All right, so I think we can move on to Greenwell Consulting Group's report and then move into committee reports. Is Greenwell here?
Yep, looks like we have Jacob on. Jacob, how are you doing tonight?
Yes, hello, good. So, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you guys again. I'll just give you a brief update where things stand in Maryland right now. So one of the biggest, I guess, sagas that we've been tracking this year is the work group to address police reform and accountability. And we've given updates on this before, but the work group's main goal was to develop a series of recommendations that they could turn over to the General Assembly on handling police reform to sort of be hashed out, worked out during the next legislative session, so 2021. The final report is due out in December, and you know, we'll get a copy of that to the town and to Chief Burris as soon as that becomes available. And I've sent over a copy of the 11 recommendations that the the work group voted upon, and 11 of those recommendations passed pretty much down-party line. But I'll just give you a few examples right now. So the first recommendation was that all police departments are to deploy body-worn cameras by January 1 of 2025. So that will be across the state municipalities, like Upper Marlboro. The second recommendation was to, for the state to enact a statewide use-of-force statute so that it was universal across counties. And that would be more in line with what some, what other states have done recently in the, you know, in the wake of George Floyd's death. Third one was any officer involved in a shooting that results in the death are to be independently investigated and prosecuted. This was, this was sort of one of the biggest pushes that a lot of the action groups that came forward during this work group were calling for was that, you know, they wanted an independent investigation that police officers shouldn't be able to investigate themselves and so forth. So those 11 recommendations, the town has a copy, I can send out a copy. You know, if you'd like that, I can send out another copy of the 11 recommendations. But really, in December, when I'll send, you know, the commissioners and Kyle all a copy of the December report as soon as that's available. And that's really what the General Assembly leadership will be using to make their bills come, come January. So now that, you know, we're only a couple of weeks out from the election, I just want to touch on the two ballot measures that you'll find on there. You may have seen ads about these. Question 1: Authorizes the Maryland General Assembly to increase, decrease, or add items to the state budget as long as the measures do not exceed the total proposed budget that the governor puts forward. This essentially, you know, decreases the General Assembly's, or increases the General Assembly's control and decreases the governor's control of the budget, which had been one of his, you know, greater powers in the state. Then question 2 with legalized sports betting in Maryland online and at certain licensed locations. Again, we've been talking about this bill for quite a while, and it was Senate Bill 4 in the 2020 session, and that's what put question 2 on the ballot. But if question 2 passes, or when it passes, they'll rework the bill in 2021 to decide how many licenses they're going to allow, where these licenses will be, and at what cost, you know, how much a license for sports betting will cost. And finally, we're looking forward to meeting, to a meeting with Senator Peters and the commissioners at the end of October on the 29th to discuss just sort of the future of the town and certain legislative initiatives and priorities that you all would like to see for Upper Marlboro. So that's all I have, and I'll take any questions you have. But barring those, our next update will come in November after the general election, which somehow both seems like a lifetime away and like it couldn't get here any sooner.
Do we have any questions? Thank you, Jacob.
All right, thank you, guys.
Chief, you want to start us off?
All right, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. For the month of September, we had five disorderly report calls. We had one minor police report call, three separate business alarms that went off, unknown trouble, actually had two vehicle accidents, five domestic calls, probably two of them were at the same address, just called multiple times. We had two house alarms, theft from auto, check on the welfare. Those calls are more or less checking on individuals, so we had six of those, but two or three of them were at the same address. We had a fraud report, a vandalism report, we had one missing person who actually returned back home a couple of hours later, two fight reports, a traffic complaint, and suspicious person, and three suspicious auto calls, two of them were at the same address. And for the month, we basically went through some of our normal, or I went through some of our normal association calls that we have with, you know, Prince George County Chiefs Association and Maryland State Police in reference to COVID-19, which we're still under, still conducting the patrols throughout the town. I, and as well as Sergeant Irby participated in Commissioner Duckett's swearing-in process. We actually had a conference call with a National Faith in Blue organization, which was trying to partner the police and churches together. We were going to do something in town, but it did not work out because we couldn't get the company that was going to, we were going to use to participate in our activity. So we still had a good opportunity to network with them. We had a conference call with Maryland Chiefs Association, kind of to the point of what Mr. Moore was talking about, some of the legislation that's going on in Annapolis. We also had a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council meeting, which is held every three months, and it actually went well. Actually updated some of the security measures here at Town Hall to make sure that the employees and visitors and others who are here are a little bit more security-conscious in what they do and how we do things here. Sergeant Irby and Corporal DeBarrow's actually attended their annual in-service training. It's something they have to do every year, to stay in compliance with the Maryland Police Training Commission, as well as some of those regulations that Mr. Moore would have talked about as well. Some of those things that he talked about were, is where they get their training as a part of that updates and those mandates they're actually taught in that in-service training. And also, the State's Attorney's Office did a Fourth Amendment training, which is throughout the county, all law enforcement and prosecutors and attorneys and, you know, practicing attorneys have an opportunity to listen to this training, talk about the opportunity to make sure that people's Fourth Amendment rights are not being violated, things of that nature, which was a good two-hour training. In the area of code enforcement, we had nine letters go out for infractions. We had actually 187 parking tickets and a little over 30-some traffic tickets written into town for the month of September. So does anybody have any questions for me? If not, that will be the end of my report.
Okay, thank you for the report. This is Commissioner Duckett. Was the missing person, was that an adult or child? Just curious.
A teenager.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Chief. As always, I see Sergeant Irby and Corporal DeBarrow's out and about, and it's good to know they're out there in the community. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Darnell Bond with Public Works. Hey, Darnell.
Thank you. Good, good evening, everyone. This is my report for the month of September for Public Works operations. I attended the MML Public Works Association Quarterly Meeting where there was a presentation by veteran LED services that covered different things, different services that they offer, such as UVC lighting, air purification, and ventilation. I also attended the quarterly DPWNT municipalities meeting where topics such as winter prep and Saturday bus schedule extensions for the 20 Addison Road and 21 New Carrington service lines were within town were discussed. Maintenance and beautification. Our crews pruned back limbs along Rectory Lane near the cemetery and 725 at the Cal Memorial. Crews also performed a brush pushback along School Lane. The trash can for Craven on Main and Main Street Coffee has been assembled and placed to encourage patrons to recycle and discard trash before returning to their vehicles. And crews also performed a sign blitz on ad signs within the town limits, which if anyone sees any more ad signs within the town, please let us know. Street and sidewalk repairs. The new street name signs for Manning the Water Streets came in and were turned over to Rommel Construction. They removed, Rommel Construction removed the old signal poles and lines that used to span the intersection. The sinkhole at Spring Branch Drive was chipped, filled, weight compacted twice to decrease the chance of a recurrence. In the dislodged grade on Main Street, the construction has been completed with the implementation of a new drain flow box and drain pipe tie. Finally, for street and sidewalk repairs, the small sinkhole on Judges Drive was packed and filled by county crews. Weather-related activities for the month of September, we had two moderate rain events that temporarily closed the Water Street Bridge. If I'm not mistaken, one of them was sort of during off-peak hours, so some of you may not have known. And refuse accumulations for solid waste, things going to the landfill, were 6.18 tons. And accumulations for yard, yard waste collections, things going to Maryland environmental were 4.62 tons. And we also had two dump body rentals for the month. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, now, thank you all for your time.
Thank you and your crew for your hard work.
Thank you.
Now, we have Will Morgan with Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, everyone. So looking at the finance for the month of, well, September, but the first aspect of it is the budget versus actuals. So permits and rentals, as you can see, we are right now at $832. We expect that to increase within the next few months. Reason being, I believe the Board of Commissioners have been able to come up with an agreement on what we need to do for our business license certifications. So we'll see a small increase in that area, possibly less than what we received last year, which was to be expected, but we will see a decrease in that area. As you all know, the courthouse is now, I guess, some form of open, and so we expect more money to keep on coming in for parking meters and also parking fines and penalties. We, you'll see in so you'll see in next month's report, a little bit about taxes that we received this, in the actual month of October. However, we also have been thinking about the amount of monies that we should be able to receive within the month of September and October for taxes. And we received roughly about $54,000 for real estate taxes and about $90,000 for earned income taxes. We expect that to be higher for the month of October, which is something that we are hoping are glad to see. Personal property taxes, I actually just sent out roughly about $20,000 to $25,000 bills, worth of bills today for personal property taxes. We're still waiting for, as that to send the public utility taxes. However, I have seen an uptick in some of their emails that usually sends their assessments to me. And as I mentioned, income taxes that we expect to be higher for next month as well. As far as expenses, our expenses really don't change. Obviously, the salaries are the salaries. We typically have our normal utility bills that we have to pay with Pepco, with your Horizons, with your Comcast. So we really don't go out of, out of whack with our monthly spending. A good amount of it, at least within the month of September, was due to some of our CARES Act spending that we did. And of course, that'll be reimbursed once the county, or once the county gets around to it. We have put in that information for the drawdown amounts. But most of our expenses are really normal monthly spending and/or will be reimbursed for the care, with the care. One area that I do want to just speak to, a lot of people may ask about vehicle repairs, maintenance and/or fuel. Obviously, we, over the years, we've been able to acquire some new vehicles for both the public safety and public works. But we send all of our vehicles to, I believe it's Prince George's County, their maintenance fleet, and they only send their bills or invoices out quarterly. So we're a few months into the fiscal year, and there isn't much there. Of course, our police and Public Works are out there servicing the town. Of course, they're using fuel, but that's why you really won't see anything in that area until Prince George's County sends, sends us the invoices. I'm a little bit of what I've been working on this past week, or last weekend, sorry. Good amount of the town employees were participating in MML. So I was able to take on two meetings or courses on budgeting. So that was something I did this, in the month of September, and also looking for other cost-saving initiatives or measures. We've been talking about this for a few months of how we're going to find a way to get rid of the heavy weight that the pandemic has either carried, left on us and/or things from previous years. So just looking at other ways that we can either save money or cut back on our expenses every year and/or every, for every month. That's pretty much all of the things that I have. Sorry, actually, I did want to speak on, of course, future deposits. Next month, I believe we're going to have roughly about $132,000 coming for taxes, and again, public utility taxes. COVID-19 expenses, we're continuously to monitor them. We're upwards of roughly, then, at least on the supplies end, for the most part, upwards of about $7,500. We've had other things that we were with the CARES Act money, whether it has to pay or get other things for the police department, of course, and then a financial audit. We're progressing. I have a meeting next week with the actual auditor. There were some things that, additional things that they needed, nothing alarming. But next week, of course, I'll be able to really fine-tune if we'll be able to make the October 31 deadline, and of course, we, we so want to make sure we do that. And of course, within the next two to three weeks, I'll be sending out this license notifications in regards to the potential resolution that is, will be approved and to get, start to bring in some, as we have everyone certified within the business community for the business license certification for this fiscal year. And that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
So Will, the resolution you said you would be getting ready would be from the audit, just to kind of approve the audit. Yes, did I understand that correctly?
No, also, I believe the resolution that may, that needs to be passed for the change in the, the business licensing amount.
Oh, right, the one we're looking at tonight, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Will. The expenses for COVID, does that fall under supplies 8130 under expenses?
So not as of right now, no. We're going to add an additional line out into the budget so we can break that out separately. Reason being, of course, some COVID expenses were a part of FY 2020 and now some are part of FY 2021. So myself and Kyle, we will eventually have its own budget line out for that because some of the CARES Act money is not only for supplies, some of it may be for salaries and/or other public safety needs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
So, shall we move on to Clerk's Office? That's Dave.
I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Does Kyle, you'll
I'm at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we have someone from the Historical Committee?
Yeah, Patty's here. Can you hear me?
Hey, Patty, yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Not a whole lot to report, obviously. I did want to make sure everybody was aware, we did lose our secretary on September 26. Dee Walsh passed away, if anybody wasn't aware. So we'll be looking to replace that person on our committee. And then we were going to have a archive session on the 17th, but it conflicts with the lynching in Maryland Conference, which is between 10 and 12:30 that we'll be attending. An email went out. It said $10 fee for the conference. There's a link. It will be obviously virtual. So that's all, that's all we have for now. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Patty. And I'm very sorry to hear about Dee. And that is hard for you, too, and all of us, the loss to the town. Okay, so next up is events. See?
This is Jeremy, if you all can hear me, is that okay?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, so this will be very short. We'd begun planning for a drive-through trick-or-treat event that we had hoped to hold in the town at a minimal cost, but due to some feedback we received, we've chosen to cancel this event, and we've chosen not to plan an alternate event. And though there's always a possibility of this changing due to the COVID situation and the circumstance outside of our control, at this time, we're just choosing to suspend any planning of any additional events in 2020. So that's it.
Okay.
Unless there's any questions.
Okay, so, well, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
And we have Sustainable Communities. Evelyn here?
I don't think she is, but I can report out, Commissioner, just they're working to finalize the facade improvement grant, which is due this week on the 15th, so they're working with Park and Planning on that, and that we're going to max out funding for both exterior and interior renovations along Main Street to help with beautification. And then I think there's also some money that the town's going to get for streetscape improvements and possibly a pocket park.
That is awesome.
Big push. And that'll go hand in hand with the bond bill we got to purchase the land for the parking, pocket park on Main Street.
Evelyn works really hard to get that out every year. So we definitely appreciate that. Do we have anyone from, I don't see Alonso, someone else here?
No, it's nothing else, nothing for the month of September to report.
Okay, thank you. And I also don't see anyone from the fire department. I'm being attacked by bugs. Okay, so we'll leave off the fire department and move on to Commissioner Reports. So, Janice, did you have anything to report out from MML or anything else?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, thank you. MML, my report is that, of course, it was my first time attending. I thought it was very informative. I attended some of the budgets for the budget session, as well as the legal public act information session. I thought, especially since we're in the COVID, that was really important, some of the facts that they hit on in terms of looking into the budget to see ways that we can cut and opportunities to cut the budget, or at least to find solutions, better and creative solutions. So I like some of those things and how we can also reconnect or pivot, should I say, in certain areas to benefit the budget, as well as any programs that are available to help reduce costs. So it sounds like MML has a lot to offer, a lot of resources. I like the object to be able to look into those, and I think it would be useful, it's very useful to our town. I don't see how anyone could not get anything out of that. I think it's very valuable to, to implement this every year. Also, they talked about like rainy day fund. And I thought that was very important to have, of course, one in this COVID time, and we're leaning on the CARES Act and everyone else is. So I thought that was very important. And then also some of the, the Public Information Act and information about what can be released and what can't be released, those things are so crucial to me knowing, and I'm sure as well as to other folks that attended those sessions as well. It sounds like some of the information has changed. It sounds like some of the information has changed and been updated, so it was important for us to be a part of that. And um, I think it's something that I will definitely want to attend on a regular basis, so, yeah. That's all I have to report right now.
I, I had a informative time as well at MML. I, what, I attended the budget meeting as well as you did and um, one of the things that had my gears going about that was thinking about uh, how we diversify our income and where our reliance is coming from on our income, just hoping we can look at that um, in future as well as um, the rainy day fund and other budgeting solutions. Um, and I also attended, I sent to the budgeting solutions and I also attended a session on racial equity. Um, and just a few things that I got out of that was that there are a ton of tools available, um, not just from MML, but there's a lot of resources out there for us. Some of the interesting things I thought uh, to think about was moving, the idea of moving from a complaint-based system to a needs-based system, which is kind of one of the things I had been um, talking about, and I think Janice, you and I have both kind of said this in our our running statements, that we should have a schedule and a plan for how we take care of our capital improvements. And doing that holistically with uh, State Highway. Uh, the other thing that I thought was really interesting that we might be able to bring in is uh, uh, there were some people there from Tacoma Park and they, um, on all their projects, they have their staff prepare a racial equity statement for each agenda item, which I think it, it's really valuable because it lets you see all, and think, it causes you to think about the impacts of what you're doing and not just, you know, your intention or any of that. Um, and then also thinking about a more comprehensive history and keeping in mind that we've been asking black people to work for us, or not asking, but telling black people they're going to work for us for free uh, for a really long time and thinking about how we can pay people for their work. Or at least not be taking it for free. So, um, those were the things that I kind of took out of that session. And then the other thing that I did was I had a, the first green team meeting with Kyle and um, some other, some folks from in town and some folks from out of town. And in the meeting, we were talking about, so the town is what's necessary to get the sustainable communities um, and green team going. But the interest in uh, serving this and building this committee is coming from all outside of the town as well as inside the town. Um, and because we're so small and because we need um, people who are interested, I had thought that we might consider having the, kind of doing a partnership with the HOAs in the area. So, we would all work together to initially kind of create information systems or um, ways that residents can purchase things like rain barrels or composters for a discounted price. And we could do that in a way that allows all, you know, everyone who's participating in this green team to be benefiting from the things that we're doing. Because I know one of the really amazing people who's interested is, and she's an HOA president. Uh, she has so much to bring to the table, but I don't see how we can take that from her without providing something to her community too. So we'll have to think about that going forward. Uh, and I'd love to hear thoughts on that in, from you, Janice, and later we'll um, hear Linda's thoughts on it. So that's, I think, all for my actual report out. I'll have some other items later. Uh, so we can move on to the uh, two agenda items, which are the Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-one, business licensing fees. This is an introduction and a board vote. Um, we're bringing this forward to vote on even though we don't have the full commission because at the last meeting, the full commission all agreed that this was where we wanted to move forward. So we feel that it's okay to vote on it because we sort of already have that agreement. Uh, Dave, do you need to read the, the summary for this?
Yes, uh, please. Let's see, Town of Upper Marlboro, twenty, Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty dash twenty-one. Session, regular town meeting, date, October thirteenth, twenty-twenty. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners, modifying the local state of emergency order initially issued on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, and adjusting certain business license fees and changing the timeframes relating to licensure and businesses located within the corporate limits of the Town of Upper Marlboro.
So I will make a motion that we accept uh, Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-one as read in, summarized by Dave.
Um, point of order, would you like to just officially ask if there are any questions?
Good call, thank you.
Safe.
Thank you guys for helping me out. Um, does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing no questions, then I will restate my motion that we approve Resolution twenty-two thousand twenty-one regarding business license fees and timing as summarized by Clerk David Williams. Can you second me, Janice?
Hi.
Oh, you gotta second me first.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I?
Hi.
All right, so noted.
Okay, motion passes. Um, and then our next um, matter of business is the M dot S H A three-year salt utilization agreement for board approval and vote. Do you read that as well, Dave, or no?
Uh, not typically. I, though I haven't been reading this, this, and let me check, this is a three-year uh, contract?
Yeah, I can uh, give a brief overview if you'd like, Commissioner. Um, so pretty much every three years, uh, the town upgrade and all municipalities in the state of Maryland upgrade their agreements with State Highway because not a whole lot of municipalities have their own salt domes, so they rely on the state to, to purchase salt at a bulk rate price from. So this agreement just lets us for the next three years, sets the amount, um, and we can purchase up to two thousand dollars worth of salt per year, um, which is, we've upped it since last year, I think it was fifteen hundred. Um, and so this is the, we use the State Highway salt for the roadways and then Public Works usually also purchases pallets of salt for the sidewalks and whatnot. And so this goes to our two town salt spreaders. So just because it's a three-year contract, um, even though it's right at the limit of two thousand dollars, because it's a three-year contract, it requires a board vote because it's over a contract over one year. Um, but it's no resolution, it's just a, a board verbal vote.
Okay, um, I just want to ask um, Darnell Bun, Public Works, uh, if he sees any problems with this or if this is how it needs to be, since you're the one using it, let's make sure we got it from you.
I have read over that agreement uh, three times within uh, the last week. And I move, we approve the three-year salt agreement.
Okay, well, that sounds good then. Um, I will make a motion that we approve this three-year salt utilization agreement. Janice, if you could second me.
I'll second.
All in favor? I?
I.
Darnell's voting. All right. Um, okay, so I think we're on to you, Kyle.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so just a quick update on um, a bunch of the town's projects, we have other ones in the works as well. But these are the big ones, um, the Heritage Area Expansion, um, currently a consultant's working and putting the study together. They did meet with the Historical Committee a few months ago. Um, so the expansion of the Heritage Area out to Upper Marlboro will help us um, get more grants and whatnot and just help with tourism efforts downtown. Uh, new playground construction, uh, the permit's still with the county right now. Um, and, but the um, playground's being fabricated. Um, we didn't get the change order in quick enough, so we're gonna work through some other options once it's actually built for those changes. Um, but there, I'm working with Sparks and Play on that one, but we have, we have a couple of months to figure that one out. Um, town financial policies, um, working with Mr. Morgan to draft a, a solid list of town financial policies for the board to, to review, um, introduce for discussion and public comment and then pass, just to kind of um, establish guidelines for handling the town's finances, deposits, reimbursements, usage of town credit cards and whatnot. So looking to see, have the board um, start looking at those in the coming work sessions. Um, we're also working on the employee handbook. It looks like I did not finish that line item, I just put it over the PEPCO site. But so, I'm gonna work on the employee handbook, it's currently, um, we're receiving some feedback from commissioners, we'll put it out for the for a resolution for passage, once we get um, final approval and all the department heads and employees get a chance to see that, so we'll actively work on that. Uh, the mural grant application, we're working to set up a arts council, I found her back from the county's art council, so I'm gonna be um, sending out a doodle poll invite to some of the people who are interested in joining the town arts um, council and see what the best time works in, in the coming weeks. And so we'll get joined by the, the head of the um, county arts council, Miss Rhonda Dallas, and she'll be able to walk the, the interested people through the process and what it takes and what a arts council be and some of the opportunities that the town may have through grants from the county and the state. Um, so that's really exciting. And then once we get that in place, then we can put out an RFP for artists for some murals downtown. Um, downtown streetscape project, um, I do believe this was carried over to the current budget, um, but we're still waiting on feedback from State Highway on a right-of-way application we submitted because applying benches and um, big-belly trashcans and some streetscape brooming along Main Street and Water Street, which are state highways. Um, so we were waiting to get that back. We closed out the Census twenty-twenty grant that funded landings, newsletter articles, postcards, physical signage, um, and advertisements on social media, which was a big hit. It was just over three thousand dollars, so we just submitted all the closure. For that, the census has been extended to the thirty-first of October, I understand, so if you haven't completed your census, please do so. And we'll be putting some more unfunded social media posts up about that as well.
Did you know uh, our rate of, do you know our rate of response yet?
Rate of responses? Um, yes, I can, I can pull that up. Um, once we search up public comment, I can kind of put it up on the screen, but there's a uh, the, the census website. I haven't checked it in about two weeks though, so I don't want to give you. Hopefully the last round of postcards um, worked. Um, so we reached not only the town, but also outside the town limits as well. Um, just because of our geographic area and pull swords.
Yeah.
Um, but it was good, the social media posts had twelve thousand engagements, so that was pretty positive. And then we sent out um, to eighteen hundred households, they got two postcards and two landings with articles in it. So that was about the reach, about fifteen thousand people.
Thank you.
Um, for the solar panels, um, so we got the grant to fully fund installation of solar panels on Town Hall to help offset costs. Uh, that is also in the backlog of the county permitting process. Um, and I just reached out to the solar um, company yesterday to get an update, hopefully for today's meeting, but I didn't get one yet, so hopefully we hear something soon. Parking enforcement vendor back on the table. This kind of got pushed off due to the COVID response and we turned the parking meters off. Um, but we're looking to um, kind of bring all our parking infrastructure under one company IPS who made all the meters, that way all their communicate, all their technology talks to itself, and we don't have, we're trying to merge two different systems. Um, so we'll be uh, reviewing that and bringing it before the board for discussion, but that's not a huge cost because they collect per citation paid. Um, so there's not a huge upfront cost for that. Um, Upper Marlboro Levy and Western Branch Grading Project. Um, we sat in on a conference call with some of the other municipalities that the county held after the uh, rain event. Um, that flooded the Hyattsville area, and so in that, we were able to ask about an update on the Levy project. Um, and that's going out for bid this month. And I just reached out to um, Glendale and Clerkey, one of the heads over at the county's Department of Public Works and Transportation, to see if we could get a representative out. Um, or well, join us by Zoom to kind of just go over the project with the board, so the board can ask questions, open up to the residents and um, advertise. Hopefully I can record it and kind of take that section and maybe put it on social media, because I know a lot of people and businesses are interested in that. Um, so hopefully we hear back from them on that. Um, I'm hoping in November, December timeframe to have them um, worked into a work session or town meeting, which one works best.
Sounds excellent.
Yeah, so uh, and then annexation phases two and three, we sent out interest letters. We're getting a lot of hits, I'm working with a couple of commercial properties just to have some questions, um, as is to be expected, so we're, we're just working through a couple of um, eighty-four lumber signed over McDonald's that just asked me their final round of questions. But then we've had a bunch of others along the seven-twenty-five corridor and up to or to that, that have signed on, so that's really exciting, hopefully um, in the next month or so, we'll console a fire next annexation phase and start moving forward with the survey. Sustainability policies, this kind of goes hand-in-hand with the uh, with the green team. Um, so I'm working with Mike from Sustainable Maryland, he sent over some draft sustainability policies, so like green purchasing and like anti-idling policies for town vehicles, just to help reduce the town's carbon footprint and uh, save on energy costs. So I'm gonna be working on those and hopefully get them before the board in um, winter time, kind of use the winter time as a time to get through some legislation through before we start picking up in the springtime on other projects. Uh, Main Street Water Street Intersection update, as uh, Darnell touched on, we're just waiting on a contract, the sidewalk contractor to come back out and finish up the, the brickwork in the sidewalks and that project will be closed for the books. Um, next up, I have to start hitting them with their downtown sidewalk projects. So I was waiting for the Main Street project to fix, we'll reach out, talk to them about their pedestrian um, project for downtown Upper Marlboro. But then also I'm sad to inform everyone, I think the commissioners know um, that they pushed back the timeline for the Water Street Bridge just because the COVID hit to the budget, the state budget, um, it got set, pushed back on the state budget project list, so we're not gonna see construction until twenty-twenty-four, unfortunately.
Unless we make some noise.
Yes, unless we make some noise, so that's uh, we're gonna be working on that as well. So I, I'm, I've been in contact with the head of the uh, the state's bridge replacement program. Um, and hopefully that's something that the board can talk to Senator Peters about, because he's the chair of the Capitol Budget Committee, so hopefully he can give us some tips.
That's the first thing I thought.
Yeah.
So that meeting.
Yeah, that's why I didn't want to make any moves till, till we talked to him and see how we could push that particular project forward, even though I know a lot of bridges across the state probably need help. And then I, I added the uh, the new project on here is the racial equality, so the board passed a resolution back in June or July, uh, moving that forward, so I know um, we're gonna be working with, with the commissioners to research that. I know Tacoma Park has an excellent model, if anyone wants to check out their, their website or what they've done ever since twenty-seventeen, I think they started getting the ball, the, the uh, the ball rolling, but some of the things off the bat that we're thinking of is a minority purchasing policy to kind of go with um, some of the financial policies and overhaul we're doing now. And just work, possibly working in an ordinance to help govern some of the things and set a uh, such as Tacoma Park, does they have an agenda item, is discussed, maybe putting that in either the agenda or the, the project memos, because each project gets a memo from staff that probably allow for a bit more room for discussion um, in the memo versus trying to squeeze it on the agenda, but um, figure out which way works best for Upper Marlboro and move that forward. So that's, we're gonna, that's a new project being added on. Um, any questions on any of these projects or any other uh, projects happening around town that I could answer?
This is Patty, um, pallets, I see there's one at the bridge today.
There's a couple at the bridge, yes, and I've reached out to the state about them. Um, and I'm not sure what they're, they had sent WSCC out there to get those pallets along the Western Branch before. Um, and I'm not sure what the holdup is now, like, I don't think they can use COVID as an excuse anymore.
Exactly.
But, so I sent back to them and to DPWNT because in case it damaged the, the boardwalk, I guess. DPWNT just replaced the boards on the boardwalk and they either removed the pallet that got stuck on the boardwalk or they just threw it off onto the grass, which I think is that one.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem, and thanks for the reminder, I'll reach out to the uh, to the environmental inspector, making note of that. Anything else? Anyone else?
Questions, we could move on to general commissioner and staff items.
Oh, I just have the uh, the pictures, the, every time you throw a quick picture.
I have general commissioner. I don't know if Janice does.
These are just the picture, we, uh, past couple of months, we've just been doing some pictures of the month, kind of highlighting, as you can. of the month, kind of highlighting. As you can see, here is the, the dual trash and recycling can for the pilot program Darnell talked about. It's, October is both breast cancer awareness, and so our police badges are purple. Chief, I'll shout out to chief for that. Check out his badges, but socially distance that the officers are wearing right now. And also, town halls are purple for domestic violence awareness month in partnership with the county sheriff's office. Darnell's Chan's got some new signs, which look pretty snazzy. I know they're excited. They've been trying to get those for three years. And a ballot drop box has been placed at the Showplace Arena. It's under guard 24/7 by park police. And then the Showplace Arena will be an early voting center. Yes, go vote, go vote. And then the green team logo. The next meeting for the green team is December 2nd, 2020, if anyone wants to join us. The information's on Facebook, and I'm going to put it on the website. And now I'll be quiet.
You guys, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The trash cans, though, over by Main Street Coffee and Treats look good.
Yeah. Great job on that, Kyle. I like that. Thank you for breaking that out. Great update with that.
And I like the green team logo.
It can get changed. It's just something I threw together. So we can edit it.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that, Janice, do you have any general commissioner items?
No, I know, not tonight. Thank you.
I just wanted.
I forgot one thing.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. There is a new published citizens guide that should be showing up before too long. Just want to give a shout out so that anyone who's tuned into this meeting will be aware that they should be hand-delivered. It's my understanding. Going to save the posted costs.
Okay.
In that publication will be all kinds of facts and processes of town operations so that you can actually have it at your hands, your fingertips.
So one of my items is semi-related to that, but I just, I guess both of them are, because both of my items are about the black history in the town of Upper Marlboro, which I noticed there really wasn't any of in that, that handbook. So that kind of inspired me to do a little research. And my, my oldest daughter is really interested in history, and so she wanted to do some research with me. And she was going to present to you all today the summary of her research, but she is a little anxious. And so she's asked me to just share with you all. So I'm just going to read this now. It is about Jerome Johnson, who is Upper Marlboro's first black school teacher, and that's by Marcella Franklin. And here is her right up. I noticed that both the teachers that were first suggested for the school had the same last name. The first teacher they wanted to send was Ezra Johnson, a white man. They claimed they appointed a good white man because they couldn't find a colored man. So Shelby Clark, a local lawyer, said that they would be better off sending no one than a white teacher because of the attitudes of the white residents. They agreed and sent Jerome Johnson, a black man. Mr. Johnson arrived in April of 1868 and organized a Sabbath school, which he named Prince George's Seminary. Mr. Johnson was an activist for local freedmen. In his short time there, he taught night and day classes that were well-attended and also formed a choir. And she read the book Records and Recollections: Early Black History in Prince George's County, Maryland by Bianca Floyd, and published by MNCPC to compile that. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. And I also just wanted to note, because I think it is before our next meeting, that October 20th will be the anniversary of the lynching of Stephen Williams. And I think that it would be good if we can acknowledge that on social media when it comes around. So those are my items.
Sarah, thank your daughter for taking that research. That's very impressive. So thank you for me, for sure, that.
I will. I think she's awesome and did a great job. And I'm totally unbiased.
Of course you are.
Terrific. I like that, Sarah, and Commissioner Franklin. And I just wanted to say that we were aware of the, the, the short synopsis of history in that little citizens guide. So the citizens guide is actually not about a comprehensive history, but there is an insert that we will be putting in each little booklet, which shows the board, so that that's the information people have for the next, well, till '22. And the backside, we thought of maybe putting a disclaimer that says that this, you know, the history synopsis is being worked on. And I'd like you to work with, you know, to, to do something short and concise, that this is a work in progress as far as recognize history, you know, recognizing the, all history in the town. So we can get that out there so that people don't think that it's all a one-sided history lesson. But that was all the history that was, that was there to pick up when it was.
Sorry, a point of order, we seem to have lost Janice. I don't want to totally interrupt you. But can we keep going while she's not here?
Well, we knew the end. Technically, there's no more voting, but I mean, adjournment doesn't require a full vote anyway.
Okay, sorry. That sounds excellent, Dave. So thank you for bringing that, or letting me know that. So, okay, here comes Janice, rejoining us. Are you with us again, Janice? Okay. Well, let's move on to public comments. So the public has a chance to enter comment, and then if Janice is there, we can spill her in on that. Does anyone have any public comment?
Hi, Joe Orkley, Old Marlboro Pike. I completely agree with you on the HOA coordination thing. I actually had proposed something when I was commissioner, and the president at the time was totally against it. But you might look to Marlton, because they, I don't know if it still exists, but they used to have something that they called CAM, which was the Citizens Association of Marlton, which was kind of an overseeing all of the HOAs within Marlton, because it's like lots of little tiny subdivisions, not one large subdivision. But I think that it might also, you know, if all of the different groups in the area work together, we might be able to get stuff pushed through the state and county about this area, because, let's face it, although, yes, we are a municipality, what happens outside the town still affects us. And so, you know, especially environmentally-wise, you know, rivers feed into the town, you know, it's not just, they only exist in the town.
They can help us make some noise.
Yes, potentially. And, and, you know, doing environmental things to help protect outside helps us inside also. I mean, it's things like, you know, even, even just things like traffic, you know, paying attention to what's getting built into the area and complaining that, hey, if you're going to do it, maybe you need to improve the roads first, rather than wait for all the traffic to come, like seems to be common in this county. Also, I will warn Dave that Victor, the guy who bought the rectory, I told him about the town truck, but I didn't know what the current policy was for people who wanted to get it for a weekend, because he had some branches and stuff to pick up. And good work on the history stuff.
Okay, thanks for the heads up. We do still offer the flatbed truck to residents. I believe the limit is two or three times a year, calendar year, that is. I mean, you know, year to year, anniversary year. And there's an agreement form that they would need to sign, a fill up, you know, and we, we would set up, and we would work with the Public Works Director Superintendent on that.
Okay. I told him to give the town hall a call.
Good, okay.
Janice, I see you got back on after getting knocked off. Dave had just been letting us know when you got knocked off that they are preparing an insert, I believe, that will have a more comprehensive history, or saying that we're working on a more comprehensive history. Did I get that right, Dave?
Yeah, disclaimer style, because right now, it's, the booklet is printed. But even if we were trying to change it, it's not a quick change to all of a sudden have a whole different flow and added a whole bunch of pages, then it becomes a long, 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 long process. So it should be written carefully. The old history section should come out, the new section should be written up, and it all should be put together and approved by the board.
Okay. Thank you for the recap. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and the insert, the, what I'm talking about, that little disclaimer would be, we insert a small sheet, a half of a letter into the booklet that has your, the commissioner's pictures on there, terms of office, contact information. And the flip side, I had just thrown on some recycling information about, don't put bags in the recycling. But we don't need to have that there. We could use that backside for informational to the community that, yes, the history is being developed. We were working hard on it, and we want to highlight XYZ, ABC, work in progress, just so that people think we're, we're just sold on the standard old history that doesn't acknowledge the African-American community.
And I, the, the current history that's in there is, I can see the hard work of our historical committee. So I don't want you to think I don't see your blood, sweat, and tears in all those details. So we appreciate that. So back to general public comment. Do we have anyone else who wants to comment? Hearing no other public comment, I would adjourn, I can just adjourn the meeting, Dave?
Right.
Okay. So I will adjourn this meeting at 8:03 PM on October 13th, 2020. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.